The discussion on paper. Both will have side. Most received follow the minutes of our regular meeting, March fourteenth, twenty nineteen. The discussion on this minutes on paper. Both will have side. Hearings and reports. Commissioners?
I just have a couple of things to report to the commission. I had the Census Bureau in my office this week talking about the twenty twenty census and I told them that I would make sure that everybody was aware. As of April the first, we are one year out of the twenty twenty census. I know that the Census Bureau is coming to our next meeting to talk to all of us about their complete count committees and would like to tell the public that if you're interested in being on one of those committees, contact the mayor's office and let the mayor's office know so that we can put people on the committees that will make sure that all of our people be counted during the census.
Thanks.
Oh, I have.
Well, thanks for bringing it up. I know the manager met with them for quite a long period of time on our behalf. And I would encourage you all, you know, nobody, I can remember years and years and years ago that census was kind of important to people. I mean, I just remember when I was teaching social studies and English in junior high school, we had a little, you know, portion during the unit about government and all and how important the census is. And I think we've forgotten so much about it, but the census in Ashland, Kentucky and Bowie County are so significant on federal and state monies. And all of you who are here, you're obviously, you know, got your head on straight about what's important, coming to governmental meeting and all that for whatever reason you're here to be here. But there are a lot of people that just, you know, that's, I'm too busy, I don't want to do that. And we have a quite a large transit population in our area and we're going to take a lot of strides through our social organizations, our neighborhood, there on Carter, to try to identify as many people as we can within the city census program. So when you get something to mail or you get stopped, Prober and they're signing things up there, please do your part. It's important and most important for the young people coming up.
Mayor, did you know that this census you'll be able to do online?
Do it online?
Do it online.
Well, that is great. I've always said we should be able to vote online. If you want a good vote out, a turnout, a vote that polls, you can't tell me there's not a way to secure it. You just can't tell me that. I don't understand why they don't do it that way. I mean, even if you have a few fraud votes up there, I still, I still think, that reminds me, I can't help but tell you this little quick story, turn me off now. That guy told me this the other day at a banquet, he told us at a banquet, he said, you know, it's up in West Virginia, voting time, the dad got his two sons and said, boys, we gotta, we gotta go out and get the votes up, you know, we get, you know, a couple of dollars per vote we get up. He said, where are we going, Paul? He said, we're going out to cemetery. So they go out to cemetery and they start walking through and looking at gravestones and they're writing names down and his sons were over there looking and all that and his son was over us trying to wipe this one tombstone off and he said, Dad, I can't, I can't, let's move on, I can't see the name. He said, oh, wait a minute, he's entitled to vote just as much as any of them here. We laughed a lot. I guess it's by delivery. But anyway, that's, that's good to hear and I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I just want to welcome everybody. This is an overflow meeting. A lot going on in Ashland, Kentucky. If you take a walk from one end to town to the other, there's construction and new business all over town. And I'm really proud of our city, proud that it's going forward. And I want kudos to Parks and Rec. Once again, I was just at Central Park. This is the time of year when the flowers are blooming, everybody's taking pictures there with their children and the new playground equipment is just being used, I mean, it's being used heavily. And then pickleball course, you're adding pickleball course, correct? And then April twelfth and thirteenth will be opening day for Little League. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I've only got one little thing. Special Olympics has been in the national news and I do want to encourage anyone interested, I think everyone's invited tomorrow at nine a.m. at Blazer's Gym, our Ashland Special Olympics will be going. So if you all have an opportunity, that'd be great. See you all out there cheering our kids on.
We want outside, aren't we, Brice?
Well, I think.
Don't take them outside, surely.
It's at the track for sure, but if weather does challenge them, it will be inside of the gym.
I have one more thing I forgot. From my nine to five job, Pretty and Poised is opening at Sixteenth and Winchester Saturday morning at eleven and I'm like, goodness, we need to be there for it. Thank you.
We've got some students here tonight, I think, from Fairview and, you know, I've been around a long time and I actually had never heard of this organization, but I have read all the information. Both of you are here on behalf of Fairview High School Chapter of Junior State of America, JSA. And Michaela Crone, you're here. Michaela here, not here? Sean Crone? Well, he's a trader. Where you think he's off to? With the money. How about Jack Evans? Stand up, Jack. So we've got the president here. That's hope. Blake Johnson, thanks Blake. Alexis Lichten, thank you. Did I miss anybody? How about your sponsor?
He's not here.
Okay. You think he's with the trader? Would you like to tell us what is, I can read it, but would you like to tell us?
Sure.
Kind of face, face the audience a little bit. And if you'd like to go here, you'll be on the mic.
All right.
Do I just face the podium? Jack Evans, the president.
Yes, let's go ahead. Okay. JSA was founded in nineteen thirty-four by a student from a California high school with the intent to fight fascism and promote democratic values. Of course, today fascism is not as much of an issue as it was back then, but promoting democratic values is. Today, people hate politics and I'm sure I preach it to the choir here, but it is true and especially in high schools. If you even mention the word government or politics, you will be met with eye rolls, groans, and people walking away from you. And I can tell you this because it has happened to me. The JSA is a way to find, a way to have a fun way to experience politics. They get students engaged so that when they become adults, when they become adults, they are more active in their own community. There are two JSA chapters in the state of Kentucky and Fairview High School is just one of them. We are here today to see our own government in action and I want to thank you all for allowing us to be here. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We're very proud of the group that's formed out there. Please let your sponsor know and your principal, that you all displayed much poise tonight and we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
And we're here and we hate politics too. We're governmental leaders and do the best we can and please feel free to come back, send us an email, call, call whatever, about whatever. Okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here. I've got an employee appreciation award I'd like to present. Ose Minsa. Come up here, will you? I think all my years down here, when Ose's been here, he's always just hidden in the back of the room and where sometimes we wish we were, but it doesn't work that way. Ose, I want to read this, but Ose is our city planner and he is taking another position of all places. Texas, right? You know, if I was looking on a dartboard of a map and my dart hit Texas, I'd say, oh, made a mistake, I'm gonna do that again. Did you do that?
No.
Ose, we're gonna miss you, buddy. You've done a wonderful job for the city of Ashland. In recognition of your fourteen years of service as planner for the city of Ashland, your attention to detail and knowledge within your field enables you to find practical solutions to problem areas. Your efforts throughout your career have contributed positively to the citizens and the community of Ashland. We wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think my wife's here, she loves to sit by your track meets before, I think. We wish you all well. You're gonna leave your voice here, I hope.
No.
Oh, my. They are a big part of our track program. We wish them the very best. Okay, city manager?
Just one thing to report, mayor. We did get good news this week. Last year's storm where we had the slip on Southern Hills Drive and it cost us about seventy thousand dollars to repair that, we got FEMA, FEMA paid us back for that this week to the tune of about seventy-three thousand dollars again to cover the Southern Hills slip and also the pump station overtime. Want to publicly thank Jack Hunter of the Streets Department. Is Kelly Workman here?
Yes.
Kelly, thank you very much. Kelly took some additional training to be more adept at filling out the FEMA applications. And so Kelly, you were a big part of that, I appreciate it. And then also Tim England from Ashland, Bowie County, Calhoun's University Management, he really coordinates all of that for us also, like about pursuit of county.
Yeah, Tim is usually there for me and he does a great job. I'm on that board and he worked this hard to get us that money back. Kelly, thank you, Jack, thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else, Commissioner? This portion of our meeting is public participation. If you have an issue that you'd like to bring to the board, American Commission, we would ask you to come to the podium and give us your name and address and hold your comments to five minutes or less. David Strahl, welcome.
Thank you. I'm David Strahl, twenty-six fifteen Terrace Boulevard. I'm here as a friend of the city, but a friend with concern. My wife and I are the owners of Twenty-Ninth Street Storage, which is on the corner of Mill Street and Twenty-Ninth Street. For many years now, dating all the way back to my first letter to Bill Fisher, which has been several years. The property behind me, when I built the storage units, was leveled with my property. Over the years, they have brought in stone, gravel, gravel, limestone, and gradually it has built up and built up to where I am now getting the runoff. And I have pictures of the runoff. We don't need to go into all of that tonight. I have pictures and my concern is it's going to flood my storage units. Now, now we have added an additional three to four feet of fill to bring that lot up with the same elevation as the new, sorry, the new Mill Street building. So I see this problem only getting worse. I would ask that something be done to protect my property. I wouldn't come without a solution. My solution would be very inexpensive if the city would even go inside their fence line three, four, five feet, whatever, and simply put in a ditch. And a ditch would simply redirect that runoff water to a storm sewer or away from, away from my property. I think it would be a very inexpensive fix and I think it would be as effective as we need. I have no problem with what the city does with their property. You build a skyscraper back there. I only have a problem if it adversely affects my property. And I ask that you guys please look into it. You guys have my phone number, you have my email address. Again, I'm here as a friend of the city.
And you're a valued citizen, we appreciate you doing business up there.
And I just want to, just want to put this on public record and I appreciate your time.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you very much.
Get back to me soon, David.
And you sent, you sent pictures, I've seen pictures of some of the runoff and it's pretty, it's pretty intense there with, and you can see limestone residue in the standing water.
You can, and it's going to get worse now that that is being further, further elevated right there.
Thanks for sharing that with us.
I appreciate it.
Our city engineer is writing it all down as we speak.
Okay. Thank you, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Staff.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your service on our board today.
Thank you.
Good evening, welcome, Reverend.
I'm Reverend Stanley McDonald, pastor at New Hope Mission A Baptist Church in fourteen-seventy-nine Dogwood Court. I just want to stand and concern for this article that was in the Ashland paper about the three sculptors, the bronze statues that's coming. One, I'm standing as a pastor, as a man of God, and as a faith-based community that this paper says that the genesis is supposed to represent. Because when I look at that picture, it doesn't represent Christ whatsoever. My other concern with that is if you all accepted, accepted this for the faith-based community, why did you not ask the faith-based community what we thought about it before we said we was going to do this? I have concern as a Christian that we're going to erect idols to stand over Ashland, being Venus and Vulcan. So I'm concerned, again, as a man of God, as a Christian, as a pastor, as part of the faith-based community and what the message that we're putting out to the world when we do this. So that's my concern.
Appreciate you calling us. Thank you very much. Sir. Your response? Well, my response is that this is art and the genesis is the word that the artist has used for that because in his, he's a world-renowned artist, by the way, but in his view, it does represent our Lord and Savior, the supreme being. That's what it means to him as an artist. It can mean anything, want to anybody else. Mythical, mythical gods are all over the country in artwork in particular.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
And we think it's going to be a draw for artists, we think it's going to be a tourist attraction. And I'd like to think I'm a pretty strong Christian too, I just don't reflect that same feeling that you have. Probably if Hanes had not maybe made that one statement in the paper, that it may not have triggered anything from a Christian community. We didn't ask for that as part of, to be representative of faith-based community and it's just art and he's, he's embarking on a hundred-foot Jesus in Manila now. That certainly is, you know, going to be a faith-based thing. He's probably done more of those than anything else, going to be the largest one in the world when he's doing it. But he's, he's a very devout Christian, I might add, and that's, you know, just have a different opinion of what you think that reflects and what he thinks it reflects. And we don't, if we have strong Christian values that we have in our area for sure, I don't see how that would deter anybody.
Well, let me say, I'm still within my five minutes, I'm sure.
Right, you are.
I appreciate your view on that and we can agree to disagree, absolutely.
Sure.
But he is not a part of this community, correct?
Uh, no.
Right. So what he calls faith-based or with this genesis doesn't really matter, that he sees it because he's not a part of this community, he doesn't live here. So that really doesn't hold any water with me and again, I'm not meaning to be disrespectful by any means. I'm saying again, as a Christian, I think it's a travesty before God what we're doing and I believe God is the whole Ashland account. We appreciate your opinion. Thank you very much.
Stanley, I'll make a mission. Intent is everything. Motive is everything. You're my brother. Have the same father. Family father.
Yep.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want anything to take the place of Christ down there in our faith-based community. The four elements that I see in this, in these statues are art, history, beauty, and work ethic. They don't take the place of Christ. This is just what this, this is for, this is, this is a gift to our city. It doesn't represent Christ, but it's, it's a mythological kind of statue that represents these things that are about Ashland, about our work ethic, about the history of Ashland and so forth. But they don't take the place of Christ and I wouldn't want, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want them to and I would object to this too, with you.
To be perfectly honest with you, when I read the article, I was offended because it was as if the writer, whoever put this in there, thought as Christians, we were stupid, that you're going to appease us by saying, this is for the faith-based community, but then you're going to erect Venus and Vulcan for world or idols.
It does not represent the faith-based community. Christ represents the faith-based community.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
I am Kelly Heischman. I am a teacher at Paul Blazer High School. I'm here with Gavin Kitcher. Do you need our addresses as well?
Oh.
We don't have any complaints, we're just here to promote something from the school.
You're a teacher at a hospital, we know where you are.
Okay, you can plug it in. I'll let Gavin take you through it.
So I'm here, I'm here representing the Paul G. Blazer Student Senate. It's a program through KVEC and we received a grant earlier in the year for something to better our communities. And we noticed that in our, in the Blazer, the actual school system, there are, there's a great number of homeless people. Nearly, in twenty eighteen, nearly twenty percent of our students were identified as homeless, which is twelve percent, three hundred and seventy-one of them. Fifty-five percent of our students are eligible for free and reduced meals and sixty percent, sixty-six percent of all of our students are scoring below benchmarks in math, qualify for free and reduced meals. It's even higher for high school students in general. And so we wanted to fix this problem and in doing so, raise our, the academic level of our school as well. To do this, we have taken a, an old box truck that our school district owned and we are converting it into a food truck that will be able to deliver hot meals on weekends, the over summer break and other holiday breaks to local areas where there's a large concentration of these homeless or free and reduced students.
Do you remember the old truck that used to sit outside of Holy Family in the summers?
I bought that truck.
Okay, we are using your truck, sir. It will be converted to a catmobile.
That was for pile one.
Yes.
Brice knows all these things too.
Yes.
That's a nice truck.
It is a wonderful truck.
Seventy thousand dollars.
We are just, we are using the truck and what we hope will be a way to reach low-income students, students that are eligible for free and reduced meals, students who are able to get a hot breakfast and a hot lunch during the school days, but are left kind of up to their own devices throughout the summer. We know that there is a fee program that happens at Clyde Elementary School, so there's breakfast and lunch, all, you know, all throughout the summer breaks, but there's a lot of limited transportation and sometimes the people who need that service the most are not able to get there. So this will act as an extension of that existing program. We're working with Linda Calhoun over at Central Office and the construction of the truck is well underway. The grant that he mentioned was for twelve, ten thousand dollars, I'm sorry. And we are reaching out to local businesses, local civics groups for financial and community support. So we just really wanted to come and tell you about our project and.
I think it's great.
Yeah.
So Charles Russell used to also provide summer meals. So they, to take care of that part of Ashland, they're still doing that? Well, when I was superintendent, we made free meals for every student in the school district. I mean, I can recall several years ago, you know, you had to have a percentage of low-income students in a school and not from the fall back or free lunches for a whole school to be that way. And if you have ten percent kids that need free reduced lunch, sometimes, especially, I want to tell you this, because I've taught at the high school my, most of my career, high school kids are no different than that kindergarten kid come to school. In fact, sometimes they get more hungry. And, and I saw it, I saw it every day and they wouldn't go in to get a free lunch. You know, that was the old, you had, you had something, you had to show and all that, you went to school, they answered, you know. So we changed that, you don't have to do anything. And that's, that's what happened with everybody having a free lunch. We ended up changing to a number and cashier knew the numbers and they get embarrassed, just like I would, just like you would, and they go hungry. They'd rather be hungry and not be embarrassed. And it was the significant thing we could do over there and there was, the percentages are so great at every school. So you really have your work cut out for you in, in determining how you're going to disseminate that food in these, these pockets, you know, of need. But you're right, on weekends, my church, we have a backpack program that's full of food.
Yeah.
And we take the crab school and we've taken them on. All of us need to remember that kids get hungry every day and not just, they get food at school and then they go home and do neglect or whatever. We have so many homes, one parent or no parents, or unfortunately, both parents are there, but don't take care of the kids. It's the saddest thing I've ever gone through in the school system, is that. And I apologize for making this effort and we'll help every way we possibly can. When did I see, Gavin, did I see your name on something the other day?
Student leadership.
Yeah, but you, are you, did you all make some kind of watch or sell them? Am I wrong about that?
It may be another student group that was.
Yeah, you remember seeing that? And they sent me a note, I sent a note back and said, we're going to bring you one to buy. I said, bring it down, I'll buy it because they're going to use the proceeds for helping kids. I know that's what it's all about. I thought there was something in the paper about, but I know somebody called it. Anyway, we'll, we'll help you. Do you have something?
I do, I have a flyer that you all can take with you, gives you a little more information about the truck itself and about the week.
How many, how many folks are in the student senate?
It's me and another student senator who's a senior representative named Cassie Stevens, but she was unable to make it tonight.
So the two of you are working on this project?
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, they, they all that, a hungry belly has no ears and I think it's important that, that we tackle this and I'm proud of you all for stepping up to, to fill the gaps. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
If you'll give us the work.
Absolutely.
And I don't know, somebody in here, it's a business, if they have a bank or a credit union, they might want to put these up in, right over here in the front row.
We are accepting business cards, so.
Anywhere else.
Real estate, real estate agencies.
We'll get them around, we'll get them around the city, city facilities and have them available for people.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for being here.
I have one question. Kelly, is this the same flyer? I know we got an email earlier in the week, is this flyer attached to that email or can you send it?
It is not, but I will send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Get younger kids thinking about younger kids. And younger teachers thinking about younger kids. I think it's great. Yeah, there's my truck. That was for learning disorders, you know, for kids reading and they used to, this is really weird, at Holy Family for several years, I had, I was over all federal programs, so I had Title One, reading and math. And a parochial school qualifies, I mean, most of the people there pay taxes and everything, so I put a teacher down there and it was great. And then two or three years went by, the government contacted, said you could not put a public school employee inside the building of a private school. Hence, we bought the truck and set it on a corner, power company came and put a plug for me and we plugged, plugged in. It was very nice, it was like a travel van, really, but had, came in a desk, chair and, and books, like a library and all that, but it worked really well and I'm glad to see it being put in this kind of use.
Thank you.
My name is Peter.
Thank you, Kelly.
I was kidding about that. I was kidding about that. Anyone else who'd like to appear before us?
My name is Heather Haffer, and I live at 1346 Nichols Place.
Say it again, please.
My name is Heather Haffer, and I live on 1346 Nichols Place, Washington.
All right. Welcome.
My concern is about the pagan sculptures that are going to happen over here on the river. Something that the Daily Independent did not say, what they did say was that they would be the largest grouping of sculptures in the U.S. possibly. But what they didn't say is that it would also be the largest pagan sculptures in the U.S. I'm not sure that the city of Ashland would want that to be their marker. The people of Ashland are known for their deep Christian roots, their belief in Jesus Christ, that would never want to be represented by 30-foot pagan gods. Venus is the goddess of love and beauty, but a more detailed description of her is that she embodies sex, love, beauty, enticement, seduction, and persuasive charm. In Sirhan Pagan's sculpture of Venus, she's holding the ash tree, representing Ashland, and the roots are dangling between her fingers. Sirhan Pagan stated that, quote, "The roots symbolize that this is really deeply embedded in her as a divinity, and the ash tree is part of her," unquote. This statement suggests that Venus has a divine feminine nature, and that the roots of the ash tree, symbolizing Ashland, are directly a part of the seducing goddess. This is not at all a representation of Ashland spiritually. The generous anonymous donor is not considering the true beliefs and values of Ashland's people, which are at large Christian, and believe that there is one true God, and his name is Jesus Christ. Nowhere in our faith, based on the Bible, do we consider there to be a divine feminine essence to God. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I do want to mention something about Vulcan also. Vulcan is the counterpart to Venus in this display, and is known as the god of fire and metalworking. Sirhan Pagan states that he is, quote, "hammering out the five elements, creating a spark," unquote. According to the Greeks, the five elements are sacred, and they wrote that earth, air, fire, water, and ether make up everything in the world. In Taoism, the five elements each have a male and female characteristic, and each governs different body parts. Their elements are wood, fire, earth, metal, and water. These five elements also affect our horoscope and Chinese astrology and the Chinese zodiac. This statement directly brings in a spiritual aspect to the project that isn't anything but Christian. And previous to coming to Christ, I myself used to be a pagan, and I was open to many different spiritual beliefs, and before Jesus saved me. And I couldn't, I was baffled at what I saw, and it was heartbreaking to me, because I was saved from that kind of world. The weight of something like this happening in our city would have spiritual implications, and it would dishearten the people of Ashland, the Christians at large, which are, you know, mostly what the city is made up of. I don't believe that the anonymous donor has done anything but want to give a gift. But I don't, I think more so than anything, he is potentially pressing his beliefs onto the city of Ashland, and not considering the actual beliefs that we have here. We believe in the god of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, and it has nothing to do with other gods.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. It's a large group. Old business item made.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute a contract with the City of Ashland, Boyd &amp; Sandy Landfill Inc., Runkie, for a suitable landfill location to receive and disposal of compacted garbage and refuse, rubble and rubbish collected by the City of Ashland for a period of one year, in an amount not to exceed 1797 per ton, for the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations Division of Sanitation.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending section 14 and ordinance number 105, series of 2000, as previously amended, restricting animals within the city, commonly known and referred to as the Animal Control Ordinance.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. Any other old business? Consent agenda?
A resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners on March 28, 2019.
Salute.
Any discussion or questions on any item on the consent agenda? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. Thank you. New business item made.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the Housing Choice Bachelor Program, 2019 Annual and Administrative Plan for the City of Ashland, Department of Communities and Economic Development, Division of Assistant Housing, Section Eight.
Salute.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign.
I recuse myself.
I'd be.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute a bill of sale between the City of Ashland, Kentucky, and Kentucky Power Company for the purchase of the streetlight system located within the 1100 block and 1300 blocks of Winchester Avenue.
Salute. Second.
Any discussion?
This might be a little bit off topic, but it's close to this. Where are we at as far as progress on completion of the project there in front of Starbucks?
It's still on schedule to be completed in late spring. There's, we have to get the power dropped off the top of these poles before we can erect the mast arms, so, but we're still planning on planting trees right around, I believe, it's today.
Sidewalks are on, sidewalks are on target to be completed.
Yeah, as soon as the contractor's done erecting the mast arms, we should finish the sidewalks within a couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for this. On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways, for the purchase of items for mast arms installation in the amount of $13,804.82 for the 1,200 block of Winchester Avenue Streetscape Project for the Department of Public Services.
Salute.
I'd make a motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'm with you, Commissioner. I'd be.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute a contract with Brentag Mid-South Inc. for the purchase of hydrophosphoric acid at the price of $2.745 per gallon, liquid chlorine at a price of $499 per ton, potassium permanganate at a price of $1.995 per pound, sodium hydrochloride, hypochlorite at a price of $0.870 per gallon, and sulfur dioxide at a price of $654 per ton for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Production, and Wastewater Treatment.
Salute. Second.
I'm not able to see any of the action.
I say this every year that we do this, and every year I've been a commissioner because of vacation or some, it's been a different person in this seat every single time, and it's always, it's always entertaining.
I just thought I would be punked or something.
I think you were. I think they could have told you for a variety of chemicals, and it's been done with, all paper.
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
Do we have a second? I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute a contract with Polydine Inc. for the purchase of liquid polymer, the water treatment plant, at a price of $11.18 per gallon, liquid polymer for the wastewater treatment plant at a price of $10.234 per gallon, and polymer cautionic at a price of $1.55 per pound for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
Salute. Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute a contract with Chemtrade Chemicals, U.S. LLC, for the purchase of polyaluminum chloride, PAC, at a unit price of $1.48 per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
Salute. Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute a contract with CI Formburg Company, Inc., for the purchase of sand at a unit price of 14 cents per pound for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
Salute. Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute a contract with S4 Water Sales and Service, LLC, for the purchase of powdered activated carbon at a unit price of 92 cents per gallon, per pound, for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute a contract with Univar USA Inc. for the purchase of liquid caustic soda at a price of $0.9727 per gallon, and liquid sodium permanganate at a price of $8.213 per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
Salute. Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute a contract with USA Bol Sol Co., LLC, for the purchase of aluminum sulfate at a price of $0.9921 per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
Salute. Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute Task Order Number One between the City of Ashland, Kentucky, and Howardton Engineering and Service, EP, LLC, regarding the sewer and lining project, Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Collection, in an amount not to exceed $500.
Salute. Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'm hell.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, providing a procedure for reasonable accommodation in the city's land use and zoning and building regulations pursuant to fair housing.
Salute. Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Service Pump and Supply, Inc., in an amount of $87,500 to refurbish and reinstall one Flowserve Model 23 EPM raw meter, water intake pump, for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Production.
Salute. Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and DESCO Federal Credit Union regarding encroachment for parking and landscaping at 1201 and 1219 Carter Avenue and 332 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard on the city's rideaway.
Salute. Second.
Any discussion? I want to thank the principals who are here and our local people who run DESCO. They're consultant. And also thank you for the fact that you're going to continue to utilize your original building, which I helped to open the dirt for that as mayor before, another time. But I appreciate very much what you're going to do at 12th Street, Carter Avenue, and take that whole corner and make a beautiful facility and readily, obviously more handy and convenient for your customers. And I know you're hoping you have a lot, a lot more in the future, which I'm sure you will, but we appreciate DESCO coming to Ashland, and you've been an asset, and this will be even a bigger asset for us. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
First reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending section two of ordinance number 101, series of 2018, which is commonly known and referred to as the Budget Ordinance of the City of Ashland.
Salute.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just maybe a brief overview of why we're inspecting these changes.
These are done periodically, Commissioner, to make adjustments. As you've seen with the water intake pump, occasionally things will happen to the budget that we'll have to make adjustments to. Some of these that were passing, or you all are passing today, accepting various grants and donations, for example, the fire department, the police department, moving $80,000 to parks and rec, $50,000 to replace the Lawrence Playground equipment, $30,000 to install tennis, LED lights at the tennis court. Adjustments to accept federal grants for the bus purchase. Also, there was, when we did the rear loader truck, there was a $3,700 difference on that from a little budget, and so that makes that adjustment. And then CDVG adjusting carryover money based on what they can carry over year to year. And I'll open up to the staff in case I missed anything else.
Thank you. On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. Reappointment?
The mayor requests the board's concurrence in his reappointment of Don Maxwell to the Ashland Board of zoning adjustment.
Salute. Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. Any other new business?
Notice, Mayor.
I'd like a motion in order to expedite, well, not all the chemical purchases. That is, we do that once a year, and this is the time of year we have to do it, to make sure we have them on hand when we do need them. It's an arduous process. But I would like to recess till tomorrow morning at 9:00 in order to help expedite the project at Carter. And we'll be doing a lot of second readings tomorrow. You got that early on Friday?
Mr. Mayor, I'm lucky. I was one of the beneficiaries of that truck down at Holy Family years ago, so I'm good.
Hey, my man. Hey, I like that. Thanks. Okay, we're recessed till 9:00 in the morning just to give second readings. Thank you all for being here tonight. We're adjourned. Recession, I'm sorry. New recess. Action Board Commissioner's order from our meeting of Thursday, March 28. Old business, almost received by the agenda?
Salute. Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Old business item made.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the Housing Choice Bachelor Program, 2019 Annual and Administrative Plan for the City of Ashland, Department of Community and Economic Development, Division of Assistant Housing, Section Eight.
Salute.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to execute a bill of sale between the City of Ashland, Kentucky, and Kentucky Power Company for the purchase of the streetlight system located within the 1100 and 1300 blocks of Winchester Avenue.
So motion?
Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close white sign. I'd be. Out of C.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways, for the purchase of items for mass arms installation in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred and four dollars and eighty-two cents for the twelve hundred block of Winchester Avenue Streetscape Project for the Department of Public Services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All paper? Close white sign. Out of B.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with BrainTag Mid-South Inc. for various chemicals for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All paper? Out of A. B.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Polydean Inc. for the purchase of various chemicals for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All paper? Close white sign. I do that every once in a while. Mr. Wheeler, please see if you're paying attention there. Good well. Out of A.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Chemtrade Chemicals, U.S. LLC for the purchase of various chemicals for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All paper? Close white sign. Out of G.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with CI Thornburg Company for the purchase of sand at a unit price of fourteen cents per pound for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Production.
Second.
Any discussion? All paper? Close white sign. Out of A.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with S-4 Water Sales and Service, LLC for the purchase of powdered active carbon at a unit price of ninety-two cents per pound for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All paper? Close white sign.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Univar USA Inc. for the purchase of various chemicals and sodas and for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
So moved.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All paper? Close white sign. Out of J.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with USOL Co., LLC for the purchase of aluminum sulfate at a price of point nine nine two one dollars per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Production and Wastewater Treatment.
I second. Any discussion? All paper? Close white sign. Out of K.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute task order number one between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Howardton Engineering and Surveying P L L C regarding the sewer and lining project for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Collection in an amount not to exceed five hundred dollars.
So moved. Any discussion? All paper? Close white sign. Out of L.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky providing a procedure for reasonable accommodation in the city's land use and zoning and building regulations pursuant to fair housing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All paper? Close white sign. Out of M.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Service Pump and Supply, Inc. in the, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to refurbish and reinstall one Flowserve Model Twenty-three EPM raw water intake pump for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Production.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All paper? Out of M.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and Desco Federal Credit Union regarding an encroachment for parking and landscaping at twelve oh one and twelve nineteen Carter Avenue and three three two Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard on the city's rideaway.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Carly, do you aware of that development on Twelve Street, Desco? You just, you, you might want to call them. I'll just give you a real quick, everyone here, you know, they're located down by.
State of the scene.
Yeah, they're going to keep that facility and keep operating, probably technology and all that. They purchased three parcels on the corner of Twelve and Carter, kind of across from Bob Evans Park. And they're going to put a, a two-story new venue in there, full service. That would be the main, main branch. And they're taking down the tobacco shop, that house on the corner, and the old Salvation Army building. So that whole block will be basically refurbished, you know.
They'll have seven, ten tech jobs at their old facility that the mayor just mentioned.
How many jobs?
Seven to ten tech jobs.
And, and then they'll have, you know, this is going to be a lot of bigger operation for them. And they've been in Ashland as mayor before. We did a groundbreaking for them, I forget what year it was. I don't know, two, oh five, six, somewhere in there. So they've been very prosperous here, investing again, you know. So they were all here last night and while we're doing these second readings to help their timeline to get the purchases finalized and torn down and get to work. So that's a big development for them again.
Awesome, thank you.
All paper?
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky amending section two of ordinance number one oh one, series of two thousand eighteen, which is commonly known and referred to as the Budget Ordinance of the City of Ashland.
So moved. Any discussion? All paper? Close white sign. Most adjourned?
Make a motion.
All paper? We adjourned. Thank you.